The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
I would like to recognize a few of our staff. As well as, and I think Lauren, I think you're on the phone call. So I think we can have you unmute when we get to Lauren. So a couple of items that we would like to highlight. Jamie Reckenberg, our STEM supervisor of secondary, has created, as you know, science learning plans for Phase 2. And Jason Learning, a STEM website for curriculum, professional learning for educators, is a nationally recognized science leaders. And they have reached out to ask that our Phase 2 science plans, if they could use them and put them on their website and use them as open source materials. So that's pretty outstanding to be recognized for that and her good work. Lauren, I'm going to ask that you unmute yourself. So Lauren Jackson is a Bristol Central High School senior. And during this hiatus that we've had from school, she participated in the seniors' March Madness Scholarship Challenge. And to date, she has applied for 36 scholarships. So Lauren, are you on the line? I saw her.
I can see that she's on the line and I'm trying to unmute her. Lauren, are you there?
Hi.
All right. We have Lauren.
So Lauren, 36 scholarships. You didn't have enough time on your hands, huh?
Uh, no.
Do you want to share?
Well, I've actually, I did more before March as well. But just in the month of March, I did 36.
Wow. So do you want to share with the commissioners, what are your top three universities that you're looking at?
Um, I'm interested in UConn, Marist College, and William Smith College.
Well, we're very proud of your hard work. And we hope that all of those scholarships prove to be fruitful and help you with your college pursuit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
A couple of other things that we would like to recognize this evening. Today is National Para-Educator Day. So we would like to thank all of the para-educators across our district that help our students succeed in the classroom. And another recognition for our food service department. Since we have been out of school beginning on March 13th, we have served over 32,000 breakfasts and lunches. And so that's quite a feat in a very short period of time on a very limited schedule of staff and crew. Couple of people that we really needed to recognize as we move on, back to you, Herr Dubey.
Thank you. So next up is approval of minutes. So first, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve our March 4th regular Board of Education meeting.
Motion to approve the regular Board of Ed meetings that took place on March 4th, 2020.
Commissioner Carlson, seconds.
Okay, thank you very much. Has been made. All in favor? Actually, should we do roll call vote for this too? So that you can get everybody's?
Voice vote should be fine.
Okay. Great. All in favor?
Lauren Jackson has left the meeting.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Is anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Next, I'll entertain a motion for our March 25th special meeting.
Commissioner G. Antonio moves to accept the minutes of our special Board of Ed meeting filed on March 25th, 2020.
Commissioner Carlson, seconds.
Thank you very much, everybody. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Excellent. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion here. Next, we will have our committee reports. And I believe the only committee that met this month was the Finance Committee.
Good evening. This is Commissioner Weber. And in the interest of streamlining this procedure, I have asked, and Mrs. Brown has graciously offered to give a report. Good evening. Can everyone out there hear me? Okay, great. The Finance Committee met back on March 11th. And we shared with them a snapshot that was taken on March 9th in order to give the most up-to-date information possible with regard to the current year budget. Currently, the instruction portion of the budget has 662,000 in available funds that we will use to assist in mitigating the current $853,000 deficit that we are running in special education. I will share with you that in running and pulling the reports today on April 1st, that the special education outlook has improved by almost $200,000. So we are moving in the right direction. We still have a freeze in the general fund, continued through February and into March to continue to assist in this effort as well. Year-to-date, the district has collected approximately $190,000 in revenues from rental tuition and Medicaid sources. And also, the first installment of the Special Education Access Cost Grant was received in the amount of $1,726,006. That was considerably less than our first installment last year. We shared with the Finance Committee that there are new regulations in place this year requiring us to have a contract with each and every outplacement facility. And at the time of our first data upload, we were waiting on 40 out of 158 contracts. Those have all been received and reported to the state with the December data upload. And so we have been told that our second installment will be larger than the first this year. Then we moved on to budget development for the 2020 to 2021 school year. And the Board of Ed received updated health insurance and workers' compensation figures from the city comptroller's office. These updated figures required adding an additional $873,000 to the health insurance budget and also an additional $375,000 to the workers' compensation budget. So at the same time, we were able to update two lines in the other direction. We've been tracking any retirement announcements that have happened since the time of original budget development. So we were able to decrease that request line by $195,782. And also, the diesel fuel bid came in at $1.82 a gallon for next year rather than $204. So we were able to decrease that line by $28,684. So this all resulted in a new budget recommendation yielding a 5.87% increase or a total budget recommendation of $121,797,183. The Finance Committee then forwarded this on to the full board, which in a special meeting on March 25th, approved this updated budget figure. The only thing I have in addition to that is the cafeteria was continuing to operate at or below budget with another full month of food service in February. And the year-to-date snapshot there showed the cafeteria running in the black by $23,696. And is my report this evening.
Has joined the meeting.
All right. Thank you very much, Jill. Next is the Chair Report, which I will read for you now. I want to start my report by commending our central office team led by Dr. Carbone. The work that has been done to provide robust educational content as well as the daily provision of meals and the distribution of technology has been nonstop and unparalleled. Our district is a shining example of dedication and ingenuity. Our teachers have been phenomenal. The care and concern that they have for their students is inspirational. They truly embody teaching with passion and purpose. I would be remiss if I did not also recognize the parents of our district. I can speak frankly, as a parent myself, that this COVID-19 situation is frustrating at best. The stress of disrupted finances, or worse, fear for loved ones who may be ill, is now coupled with, for lack of a better term, homeschooling our kids. Most are not trained to be educators. Many are not technically savvy, myself included. The amount of encouragement from parents, not only to myself, but from parent to parent, is a testament to who we are. I've seen people reach out in many ways, from offering assistance on various platforms to helping pick up meals for children while their parents are still working and dropping them off to their homes. The fact that this pandemic has brought out the best in us
has worked by like. Join the meeting.
And I'm very proud to say that we are part of this. Thank you. Moving along, Dr. Carbone will now give her superintendent report.
If you had an opportunity, and I will do it for us for now. Night, the request was to place a luminary outside your house to show our support for the doctors, nurses, and medical professions that are working to feed others through the COVID-19 outbreak. So symbolically, we will put the luminary or the candle to the side. But if you have an opportunity to put yours out on your stoop, we would appreciate the collective spirit of support for those who are helping keep all of our loved ones safe and well. Moving on. The past couple of weeks, although we haven't been together, we have had many of our students, our parents, and our staff step up and show us why Bristol Public Schools is a phenomenal place to learn and grow. Some of our students participated in the History Day. And we've won third place and second place respectively across the state. Two of our students shared their displays, led by our talented and gifted coach, Mr. Thieriel. One morning, we were greeted by one of our young scholars who was very excited that the book that we were going to read today was "Mix: A Colorful Story." One of our other scholars, breaking the sound barrier in History Day, won second place across the state for their age group. Every time I move the picture, I have to change that. And then two shout-outs to both our teachers and our parents, who also are teachers or principals. On the left, Beth Lafferty being really excited that during the second day of Phase 2, 100% of her second period class had participated. Ms. Triani, our attendance coordinator and family outreach, who also is a parent in the district, commenting in words of encouragement for our families who are also trying to participate remotely. And then on the right-hand side, one of our parents, a parent up at Southside, who is preparing her child for the day, but she's also a principal in Hartford. And so shout-out to all of the parents who are trying to also teach at home and work from home. And then lastly, if you have nothing to do and you're home tomorrow, and we will be home tomorrow, please join the elementary schools' Facebook Live Family Trivia Night, which is at 7 o'clock tomorrow evening. I do want to just walk through a few items. One, we had remarked earlier that we serve over 33,000 meals. Our food distribution has expanded. Our food distribution is Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at Bristol Central and Bristol Eastern from 11 to 1. That's for a drive-through. And then on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we also have meal distribution at different locations throughout the city. At 11 a.m., we have meal distribution at the Rockwell Park Pavilion and Copper Mine at Sean Drive. At 12:15, Zbikowski Lake Avenue Apartments, as well as Cambridge Park at Davis Drive. And at 1:30, food services at Huntingdon Woods at Blake's Lake. We began our Chromebook distribution for families who may not have access to devices on March 24th, from 10 to 4 at each of our school sites. For Phase 2, for those families who may still need a device or to access a device, if you use the Bristol All-Hart Hotline, which is listed there below, 860-584-6253, and use the "If I Need Technology Assistance" button, you'll be patched through to the folks over at the Board of Ed. And we are scheduling by appointment Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays for picking up laptops at the Board of Education office. As you mentioned, Chair Dubey, we have moved into our Phase 2 of our continuation of learning. During Phase 1, which was the day that we left school through March 27, we focused on our basic necessities, our students' basic necessities, access to food and access to technology with continuation packets that were either copied and/or online. During Phase 2, we will be focusing on access and use of digital learning format, which is March 30th, this Monday, through April 20th. And then for Phase 3, we will be completely having asynchronous classroom instruction. Just brief overview of what Phase 2 and the goals for Phase 2. Our goals for our scholars and families during Phase 2 is to build our scholars and families' comforts and skills learning digitally by providing access.
Has joined the meeting.
We are focusing on moving forward in the curriculum with our students in an easily or hopefully easily accessible format. And we are working through some of the accessibility issues as we hear of them. That we're ensuring equity by designing learning opportunities that are common within Phase 2, which means all students are being exposed to the same learning activities, as well as that they are asynchronous to meet the needs of families. And also, it will allow our scholars to submit assignments in different ways, in the ways that they're most comfortable, either email, photos and scans, or sharing within the Google Suite. While that is happening, we have goals for our educators. So the first goal is that our teachers and educators are in frequent and regular communication with families and students. That while they're doing that, they're determining the level of support and assessing what scholars need at home, as well as we are modeling for teachers how they can plan within a digital format moving forward into Phase 3. We are using this time to assess the effectiveness of our methods and our strategies by getting feedback from our students. We are also building the skills of our educators. Now, all educators might be completely comfortable within the Google Suite. And then lastly, we are using hiring and using Google Classroom coordinators who will end up supporting some of our educators throughout the district and also building some of the platforms that we will need. The content focus during this phase of continuous learning in pre-K through 2, it focuses on math and literacy. In grades 3 through 5, the focus is on literacy, math, and science. In grades 6 and 8, ELA, math and science. Spanish has posted supplemental activities for students. And then in grades 9 through 12 is the core required courses. While World Language AP is using their Google Classrooms that they had used during the school year. And electives are supplemental at this point during the Phase 2. In reference to students who receive services through special education and students who receive accommodations through 504 or are English learners, there are different ways that we're meeting their needs. The first with regard to students who receive special education services, their continued learning activities and/or related materials were developed for each scholar that was designed and aligned to their goals and objectives in their IAP. For students who attend out-of-district programs, their learning materials are being forwarded them directly from their out-of-district program. And then in regard to 504 and our EL students or our English learner students, accommodations will be made relevant to the work being provided by classroom teachers when assigned their learning activities. And for our English learners, teachers have provided and will continue to provide activities that are aligned with their last links level, whether level 1 or 2, or 3 and 4 at the developmentally appropriate age band, grade band. Lastly, how are we monitoring our students' progress and participation? The request in Ask is that teachers are monitoring on a daily basis and submitting office hours to families. They will be responding to student questions and/or inquiries into the work. Teachers will also reach out by phone if we have not heard from a scholar or if the scholar hasn't participated in our learning activities. And feedback will be provided on a daily basis based on the work that is submitted by each student. And that concludes my remarks for the evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Carbone. We will next be reviewing the consent agenda, point 71A and B. I'll make a motion, I'll request a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Commissioner G. Antonio makes a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay. I am going to ask just for the, I think that we do a little follow-up and everything to be accounted for, please. If that's okay, Susan? I can write it down if you want.
Okay. I couldn't unmute myself. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, hold on. So Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner G. Antonio?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien? Did he say yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Pong?
Yes.
Commissioner Scholanka?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Radowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Dubey?
Yes.
Unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to public comment. Sorry, I feel like I'm echoing. There was one public comment that was emailed that I will go ahead and read. And what will happen after is this parent will be followed up with someone from central office. Hello, Board Chair and members of the Board of Education. My name is Barbara Lozier. I live at 205 Summer Street. I have been a Lancer parent of a three-season athlete for the past eight years and a wrestling parent for seven of those years. I have been on the ASBC Board for all eight years and president the last three. I'd like to clarify concerns the wrestling parents presented at the last Board of Ed meeting. Number one, not being able to spend their money. At the beginning of the year, the Booster Club was told that the superintendent met with all principals and told them the rules were going to be enforced. Money can only be spent on items that are covered by policy. All fundraisers had to go through the superintendent's office for approval. Wrestling has their own checks. We never told them they couldn't use their money or there was a freeze on their booster money. We have shared that we are able to provide trophies and awards, banquets, scholarships, equipment requested by coaches that has been approved by the AD. And that these rules are the ones the wrestling account should be following. A copy of the bylaws was given and discussed with Laura, who is the wrestling treasurer. ASBC also shared this information with Laura, Mandy, and two other wrestling parents at two separate Booster Club meetings. I think it's important to note that wrestling parents have attended Booster Club meetings, blank, out of the last three years. Trophies. We supply trophies, awards for all Bristol Eastern athletes that earn them. Trophies and awards have been bought for the wrestling team. Every year, they have won the CCC and Class L tournaments. I have a picture of the awards from the last four years. The tournament we asked to be reimbursed for the trophies was the Lancer Duels. The awards at this tournament were going to whoever won. They weren't specifically for Eastern wrestlers. Therefore, the athletic department was responsible for providing the awards. The trophies, they stated they paid for themselves, are the additional awards the team has wanted, the rings, quarters at pullovers, and T-shirts. This is above and beyond what Booster Club can provide. The money in the wrestling account can cover these trophies and awards. Travel. We do have a line item in our bylaws that allow for us to supplement travel costs, which is another way the wrestling team can spend their funds. Any team that was traveling and needed additional travel funds would follow the written request procedure for the ASBC. Some teams don't require additional funding for travel. For example, the volleyball team
Has left the meeting.
would on occasion go to Boston on a school bus fully covered by the AD. The trip to Cumberland in a coach bus is not a covered expense. Therefore, the AD splits the cost with the team. A written request to cover the additional cost for travel would go to the wrestling account first if they don't have enough to cover the expense. They could then send the written request to the ASBC. If the team traveled by school bus, it would fully be covered by the AD. As far as uniforms and gear, in the ASBC bylaws, we are not permitted to purchase clothing unless we have permission from the AD. Budget. Each season, we look forward to the BE versus BC games as they are where we make the most money at our concession stand. Our budget feels the loss of revenue when we don't have those games. For example, during soccer season because of the EEE mosquito scare, there weren't any night games, no boys and girls, Bristol Eastern versus Bristol Central Soccer back-to-back. The nature of the wrestling season is that they have additional opportunities to help the Booster Club raise money at the concession stand through the all-day wrestling tournaments. Their ability to help support other sports and not just wrestling is appreciated. The budget numbers show that the vast majority of the ASBC budget does not come from wrestling and that every team's contribution is important. The breakdown of what teams raised this year for concession sales is as follows. Cross-country, $59. Girls' soccer, $184. Boys' soccer, $458. Girls' basketball, $1,200. Boys' basketball, $1,945. Wrestling, $2,258. And volleyball, $2,281. We do on occasion get to man an admission table at the Saturday wrestling tournaments. This year, there was an additional $530 from admission to a wrestling tournament. The wrestling contribution for this year concession sales may have been higher than noted, but there was one tournament that did not have any wrestling parent volunteers. So the Model UN club benefited in our loss. The report balance of close to $20,000 did not take into account approximately $12,000 in planned and budgeted deductions for the remaining two banquets, trophies for each season, photos for each season, stock for the spring concession stand, and the two scholarships for graduating seniors. While the current public health emergency has canceled the winter banquet and the spring events rest assured, the ASBC does not typically carry that large of balance. events rest assured, the ASBC does not typically carry that large of ballots. I am happy to credit the wrestling team, specifically Coach Lish, for creating the culture of donating. He requires each wrestler to donate drinks to the Booster Club. He was the one who encouraged the Booster Club to make the request of every team as a way to raise funds without spending any money. We have been doing this for a few seasons now and it has been a big help with drinks. I believe the needs of wrestling would benefit from their own club. Before the cancellation of school, Laura, Mr. Higgins, and myself were planning on meeting to establish a separate wrestling Booster Club. I hope these explanations help to clarify any confusion. If you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them. Thank you very much, Barb. If you're still on the meeting, we will get back to you. That was the only person who signed up for public comment. Next on our agenda are deliberated items. Nine dash one is our enrollment study update.
So as you know, we have engaged and revisited the enrollment study that was included as part of the feasibility study done in 2017. We have asked for an update of that, of that enrollment study component. And we also have our consultants from DRA on participating this evening so they can use the information from the feasibility, from the enrollment study that we're about to hear to inform an updated feasibility study. This evening, we have Rebecca and Rebecca, I'm just going to pull up your PowerPoint and then get you queued up from Mylone, Mylone and McBroom. And once I have her, it all filed up, I will start the presentation. Rebecca, would you like to just open and explain a little bit of how we got to the point we are right now?
Sure. First, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good. Okay. So thank you again. I'm Rebecca Auger, a principal planner with Mylone and McBroom. And we had prepared enrollment projections for the district in late fall 2017 as part of a school construction feasibility project. And the administration reached out to us earlier this year with concerns on the projections running a little low based on your actual enrollments over the last couple of years. So we decided to, to run an update on that. And if we could move to the next slide, please. What we've done is just taken a look at the performance of the projection models that we had done in 2017, updated some demographic housing economic trend type information to ensure we understand what's changing within the city, look at birth trends and projections, and then updated our projection model. So I'm going to walk you through it. And I think given the format tonight, I'm just going to walk through the entire presentation and then take questions at the end. So if we could move on to the next slide. So in 2017, we prepared a low, medium, and high projection model. And at that time, we recommended using the medium model for planning purposes. What I'm showing you at the top of the slide is your actual 2019, 20 enrollments compared to that medium model in the tops chart and then the high model in the lower chart. And as you can see, your actual K-12 enrollment is running about just under 3% higher than the medium model and just under 2% higher than the high model. And what we can see here is in that, in the high model, we actually were pretty accurate with the K-5 total number, which we had projected to be about 3390 for K-5 in the high model, which is the second chart down. And your actual enrollment this year is 3382. There's a lot of variation at the grade level. As you can see with the reds and the blacks, you had an unusually small kindergarten class last year that is going to affect your enrollments moving forward. However, where we're really running low is at the high school level where even with the high model, we're 4.4% lower than your actual. And at the middle school level as well, even with the high model, we're just under 2% low there. So there's a couple of things happening that we wanted to take a look at and adjust our models based on some new information. So if we can move on to the next slide, please. We just took a look at some basic demographic information to make sure nothing unusual has really occurred over the last couple of years. Your overall total population is relatively stable. It's decreased about 1% over the last decade. No major fluctuations in the last couple of years. Next slide, please. While the total population level is stable, there is fluctuation in the composition of your population where we've seen an estimated decrease in younger children, those under the age of 10, which that top-left chart is showing you by age group just changed from 2010 to 2018. And you can see those bottom two bars showing a loss. However, we see a growth in the older student age population, those age 10 to 20, which are the next two green bars up. So there is some in-migration into the community of families. There's, doesn't appear to be a lot of younger starting families necessarily. We take a look at the birth trends. Whoops. We could go back to birth trends. I just want to point out a couple of things. It's okay, move on to the birth trends, the next slide, please. There's just been a general downward trend in births over the last really 20 years. If you look at this entire chart, you can draw a trend line that's downward. But I want to point out a couple of things in recent history, including the sort of bubble that we're calling out in 2014 where we have a little spike of 669 births. That's your incoming or current kindergarten class this year. And so we would anticipate a larger than you might have seen over previous years kindergarten cohort this year. In the year prior to that, in 2013, while it was a dip in births, as we'll see later in the presentation, you just have an unusually small cohort that entered the district last year as a kindergarten class. What you should note, though, is moving past 2014, we see a pretty significant dip in 2016, really. And that is going to affect your enrollment projections moving forward. Those would have been preliminary numbers in, when we lasted our projections in 2017. And I suspected that they were highly influencing the downward trend that we were projecting. We now have a couple more years of preliminary data where we see that births did rebound a little bit in 2017 and have stayed relatively stable according to estimates for 2018, 19. So we have to prepare projections on the birth data in order to do a 10-year enrollment projection. And as you can see, we're just using mathematical models to do this. We're about plus or minus 30 from the current level, which is about 610 to 615 births per year. Moving forward, we took a look at change in housing units. This map is based on census data. It's not always the most accurate. It is estimates with fairly large margins of error. However, it gives us an idea of what's happening where in the city. There was an overall estimated decrease in housing units of about 2.5% since 2010. Most of that occurred in the center of the city. There were areas where there was growth in housing units. Those are highlighted in the green, primarily in the southwest, southeast corners of the city. Next slide. Taking a look at housing sales data, sales have appeared to have recently reached a new peak level and really seemed to be holding at that level over the last three years, averaging about 750 sales per year. That's, you know, incredible growth from the recessionary period and an increase of about 50% from 2011. Again, in 2017, we would have been looking at just that growth trend, not knowing when it might sort of level off. And it does appear that it has leveled off. The sales are strong both in single-family and condos. Next slide. Housing permit data is data that we obtained from the state. We know that it's not always necessarily the most accurate. When, when we talk to building departments, we can sometimes get different numbers, but it's a single source for comparing trend line. And the trend line has been relatively stable since 2015 at a very low amount of development. You did have a multifamily little peak in 2013, 14, which is represented by those gray bars in those columns where you had some development that likely started occupancy around 2016, 2017. Next slide. We followed up with the city planning department to make sure that we're aware of any substantial housing development that may occur or be underway. And we were pointed to five particular developments of scale. And they're listed here in the table at the top. And they are a mixture of single-family condo and apartment developments. They represent about 300 new units for the city. Some of them have already been built, but about 65% of them remain to be built. And what I really want to call your attention to on this slide is that half of those units would be located in the West Bristol Elementary District. And on top of that, the, the developments that are in West Bristol are a single-family detached unit type that have a higher bedroom count and tend to be more attractive to families and are more likely to generate student enrollment. I'd also point out that South Side has about 40% of those 300 units within it as well, more of a mixture on the bedroom counts, but still likely to generate some enrollment as they are condo-style development. Next slide. This is just showing you where those five developments are located within the city against your elementary attendance boundaries. So as you can see in the pink area, that's the West Bristol attendance area, you have those two single-family developments coming onboard with 124 units or so. And then South Side in the purplish area has those condo unit developments. On the next slide. We also just took a look at rental housing. You have pockets of areas within the city where there is relatively dense amount of rental housing, which tends to have a more transient population, a little more in and out of families and students. And I'm sure you're all well aware of these pockets, but they affect certain elementary attendance areas more than others, especially the West Bristol area, the Ivy Drive area and Green Hills. Next slide, please. So then we get into the actual enrollment history. And again, we've seen a steady decline since about 2006, '07, but some recent changes and fluctuations. So I'm just going to call out a couple of things here. First of all, at the elementary level, which is just K-5, we're not factoring in pre-K here, which is more, the number of pre-K students you have is, is more determined by funding for seats than necessarily a demographic driver for that enrollment. So right now, we're just looking at the K through 12. And at the elementary level, enrollment has decreased about 7% over the last 10 years. But if you look at those red bars, you can see there was a period of relative stability, really between, I'd say, 2010, 11, out to about 2014, 15, and really start to see a decrease in 2015, 16, until this year, when you saw a small increase. At the middle school level, while you decreased about 8% over the last decade, it's the only grade grouping level that actually has seen an increase over the last five years. And at the high school level, you've seen about a 9% decrease over the last decade. But again, this year, you saw a little bump up. And we're going to get a little more depth with these on the next slides. See if we could advance. So when we plot out your elementary students, again, K-5, what you're looking at on this map are students represented by the colored dots. The color is the school that they attend. So ideally, you would see a lot of pink dots on top of a pink attendance area for West Bristol. But what catches our eye on this map is that there's a lot of what we call the Easter egg effect, where you have a lot of colors all over the map. So there, we know that there's a lot of manipulation of the neighborhood enrollment trends going on. And it's not that you're intentionally doing something, it's that you have a lot of district-wide programming that is placing students outside of their school of attendance area. And given that, we just wanted to take a look at the true neighborhood enrollment trends so that we're able to adjust our model to really reflect some of that housing development that's going on and an understanding of what's happening in some of those more rental density areas. So if we could advance to the next slide. So what we, what we did was just took a look at students by where they reside, not necessarily by the school that they attend, just to really understand that neighborhood level change. And some of what popped out to us here is the growth at South Side. If you look in the middle of this chart, that purplish line, it's South Side. So if you weren't moving students for programming reasons, you would have seen some pretty significant growth there over the last four years. There's been some recent growth in West Bristol, but also just a relative stability there. They're at the top of the chart. Relative stability also at Green Hills at the top of the chart. And we see decline in the Ivy Drive area, in the Stafford area. So this is just more information for us. When we went into projecting the elementary school districts, we use this to help us adjust our model a little bit. So if we can move on to the next slide, we're actually looking at the five-year change in enrollment by school, by, so where students actually attended school, not just by their residence. So again, your elementary school enrollment on the top-left chart, you can see that your peak was way back in '06, '07. You had that period of relative stability, really immediately following the recession. And then you started a decline in 2015, 16, and saw a small increase this year. That decline of the last five years affected a couple of schools more heavily than others, Stafford and Edgewood popping out in that top-right chart, having declined 16% over the last five years. Ivy Drive, South Side, less so, Mountain View, a little less so. And then West Bristol, Hubble, and Green Hills actually relatively stable over that five-year period. So again, the change has not been evenly felt across the district. On the next slide. Taking a look at your middle school enrollment, again, we just plot out the students, a little less outplacement of students apparent at the middle school level, but just a refresher for you on where your middle school attendance boundaries are now. West Bristol shown in the purple, Chippens Hill in the orangish, Green Hills in the green, and then Northeast in the blue. Next slide. So your middle school enrollment, again, it's the only grade level that actually saw an increase over the last five years in total enrollment. And you can see it actually increased more so than this current year would indicate. It actually saw a little bit of a decline over the last, over last year. So since 2014, 15, no middle school has actually experienced a decline. However, Chippens Hill didn't experience the growth that all the other schools did, where Northeast and West Bristol actually increased 11% over the last five years and Green Hills, 7%. Next slide, please. And then again, at the high school level, you have Central and Eastern, just reminding you of what your district boundaries look like. And on the next slide, we have the enrollment trend here. Again, relatively steady decline occurring over the last 10 years until, I'd say, the last three or so, where you appear to have bottomed out and now be turning upward again in the, in the overall trend. Very uneven between the two schools over the last five years. Eastern experiencing a significant decline, Central staying relatively stable. We took a look at Magnet School enrollment information that the district was able to provide, just to understand if there's any changes of significance happening there. And you can see the total number of students going outside of Bristol Public Schools for Magnet Schools is relatively stable. It's right around 300 per year. There's a little bit of change going on in that your elementary, that K-5 levels decreased a little bit this year, but it was picked up a little bit more in the middle school level. High school level is, is really relatively stable over the last three years. We know some anecdotal information that some students returned from Kinsella Magnet this year, and there have, there were changes with Kinsella that lead us to believe that 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 lead us to believe that that, there will likely be fewer Bristol students going out to Kinsella over time. And then we also anticipate some changes that are happening within the Hartford and Crick models, where Anna Grace Academy is going to be opening their new facility in Bloomfield. That might have an impact of returning some students to the district. And then when you open your own magnet school for middle grades, we also would expect a greater retention of students who might have opted to go outside of district for a magnet school, that they'll likely stay within district. On the next slide, I'm going to move us into the actual projection work. So just a refresher, our projections are based on a cohort survival methodology. It's a standard methodology for projecting enrollment. It's what the State Department of Education looks for in construction grant applications. And it's based on persistency ratios, or cohort survivor ratios, which are calculated from historic enrollment and used to project future enrollment. Those ratios account for the variety of factors that affect enrollment, from anything from housing development or the character of housing stock, to economic conditions, to competitive educational systems, such as the magnet system that your students have access to. It really accounts for all of those things. So on the next slide, we have your historic enrollment, which we use to calculate the survive, persistency ratios. Want to just point out a couple of things here. One is your current fourth-grade class is a little bit of a bubble at 600 students. It has been a larger cohort, I think, for a while, really since it, since it matriculated in, in 2015, '16 as a kindergarten class of 600 students, that was a somewhat unusually large class. Even though it's been shedding students as it matriculates up, it's still a large fourth-grade class, and that's going to play out in your enrollment projections, as you see, moving forward. I also just want to point out the kindergarten class of 2018, '19, and just how unusually small it was. It was 485 students. And so you have an unusually small first-grade cohort in the system right now. That's also going to play out in your enrollment projections. So if you could move on to the next slide. These are the persistency ratios. So again, this is just calculating a cohort as it moves from one grade to the next. So a number over, over one means that you added students as that grade cohort moved up. A number under one means that you've lost students as that grade cohort moved up. And what you'll see is over the last two years, so the 2018, '19, the 2019, '20 lines, you'll see some more 1-plus numbers, I'd say, than you have seen in previous years. So when we look at that, we are looking at relatively small sample sizes when we're looking at just following a grade cohort as it matriculates. So to get a better feel for what the in-migration is, we, we do an estimate of migration calculation. It's just taking a larger sample size. Where we compare the first through seventh-grade cohort as it matriculates up the next year to the second through eighth grade. And so that last column on this table is showing your estimate of migration. And in the last two years, you can see you were hovering around 2% positive migration, meaning you were bringing in students at that level. And as you can see in that entire history present in that table, you've not had that, that level of in-migration. So you have suddenly, in the last two years, started to attract students into the district, whether it's returning from magnet schools, whether it's truly just new families locating in the district. And because it's not apparent that you have a new birth-to-k ratio where your kindergarten class is compared to that birth cohort from five years previous, that hasn't experienced a significant increase. It's not that you are attracting or keeping families that have started their families in Bristol. You're seeing that just above one in many different grade levels. So it's truly that you're attracting new families to the district that have kids already ready to enroll. And again, just that 2018, '19 kindergarten cohort, just a very unusually small birth-to-k ratio there, which we've highlighted. As you can see in your history, just, it appears to be anomalous. We're not sure, we can't explain it. But it doesn't appear to be a new trend. Next slide. So given that level of in-migration over the last two years, we tried to get a better feel for where students are coming to within the district. So we identified those students that were new to the district simply by comparing student ID numbers from one year to the next. It's not an exact science, but it's a pretty good indicator. So what you're looking at are the numbers of first through 12th graders, because all kindergartners would be new to the district. So it's just first through 12th graders that their student IDs were not there the year before. So we're deeming them new to the district, and how that has changed over the last four years. And it's by the school that they attend. So as you can see, in the bottom total number of that table, there's growth there. In 2016, '17, you had 550 students in the district that were new. This year, you had 639. So there is an increase of about 16% of students that were new to the district, across the district. And you can see there's, there's some trends in some school districts, such as Edgewood, you know, an increasing trend, but it kind of fluctuates between schools. There isn't any one district that is jumping out as having, you know, radical growth. But there are some, such as West Bristol, where it's a pretty steady growth. You know, adding 100 students that are new to the district each year is a pretty significant number. And then just looking at those numbers at grade-level groupings. As you can see, again, at the elementary level, you know, 276 students were new to the district in 2016, '17, and this year it's up to 304, so a bit of growth there. But it's really at the middle school level where we see a pretty consistent and steady growth over the last few, four years of bringing students into the system. And then at the high school level, there was some growth going on, but then it has tailed off a little bit. And this is all juxtaposed against the enrollment trend itself, where you're experiencing a decline in students despite this positive in-migration. So again, I think what it speaks to is some of those smaller cohorts that are entering the system, even though you are bringing new families in. It's not necessarily compensating for some of those smaller cohorts that have entered the district. So we've prepared a low, medium, and high projections once again. The high projection model is sort of our optimistic. It's our optimistic scenario. The medium is really playing out the most recent trends and just holding them out for the next 10 years. And the low is looking backwards a little further and playing out some of that more serious declining trend for you. Some of the assumptions that are specific to this model is that there wouldn't be any change in private or other public school enrollment trends. So we did not build in any factors into this model for changes in the Crick or Hartford magnet system, or even the change that will likely occur when you open your own magnet school. We're also not looking at pre-K projections here. Those are, again, more dependent on funding. So here are the low, medium, and high models. We're just calling out the first five years would be out to 24, '25. That's our period where we have the most confidence in these projections, because it's based on known data. The latter half of the projection horizon is assuming births that our birth projections hold steady. And what you can see, despite the uptick in in-migration that we just talked about, the projections still see at the high level, you might increase over the next three years, but then experience a little bit of a decline to be pretty much where you are now, out five years. That's with the high model. There's a difference out five years of either a decline of about 4% to really no change from your current enrollment between the low, medium, and high. For the 10-year horizon, the difference is either a decline of about 9% up to pretty much no change from your current enrollment level either. For budgetary staffing purposes, for a shorter time horizon, we would recommend using the medium model. If you are using, if you are looking to plan out facilities, we would recommend looking at that higher model, because you can't, it's, it's much harder to adjust your facilities to match a higher-than-expected enrollment than it is to adjust other things. So we would say, really, you should be looking between that medium and high model for planning purposes moving forward. Next slide. This is just playing out the medium model for you by grade grouping. So K through five in the red, middle schools in the, in the green, and high school in the blue. And despite an increase this year at the elementary level, we have those declining births that I mentioned. After 2014, you saw that dip in 2015, '16. That affects those elementary projections moving forward, so that we still see a decline out five and 10 years because of those smaller birth cohorts. The middle schools also projected to decrease in the first five years by about 100 students. And then the high school is also projected to decrease over the life of the, of the projection horizon. Going to the next slide. These are the specific grade-by-grade projections. Again, that current fourth, I, I'll call your attention to the years '22, '23, and '23, '24, because you have a, a couple of things happening that affect your middle school enrollment in '24, '25. So if you follow that total six, eight columns, second to the last on the right, this is your middle school enrollment projections. And you can see it's kind of declining, but not significantly, until all of a sudden in the year '24, '25, it appears to really decline by suddenly 90 students in a year. And what's happening there is that fourth-grade bubble class that you have now has matriculated out of the middle school cohort. So they'll have reached ninth grade by then. At the same time that your current first-grade class, which is an unusually small class, will have matriculated up to the middle school level. So that accounts for a sudden dramatic decrease in a one-year period. There could be changes, because as you open a new magnet school, that '22, '23, '23, '24 period could see an increase in that middle school level, which might soften the decline that we're projecting there. On the next slide. These are the individual elementary school projections. We did adjust our model pretty significantly here. And I should mention that obviously the low, medium, and high projections are all higher than they were from the 2017 models. We did do more adjustment at the elementary level because of some of the housing development we were looking at and because of those neighborhood enrollment trends that we were looking at, that I talked about earlier. So West Bristol, it's the only school we're projecting to increase over the 10-year horizon. We see out, in the, in the first five years, we see Hubble and Stafford losing the most significantly, while West Bristol is increasing. South Side is holding relatively steady. We see most of the loss happening in the Hubble and Stafford area. On the next slide. For the middle schools, Chippens Hill is projected to, to decrease the most, 12% out five years. Green Hills and Northeast are projected to absorb some of the cohort bubble that will affect the middle schools in '22, '23, and '23, '24. But even with that, Northeast is still projected to increase 9% out five years. And while Green Hills is projected to increase. And West Bristol, again, increasing by 3% over five years and 8% out 10 years. With the high schools, they're projected to follow similar patterns, really. Central is projected to increase slightly through the first five years and then start to decrease, while Eastern is also projected to increase slightly before decreasing a little bit more strongly than Central. But very similar patterns there. Next slide. I'm happy to, to take any questions. I know it's a lot of data and information to swallow.
Any questions from any of the commissioners to Rebecca?
I'd just like to say this, Commissioner Giantonio. Thank you for the information. It's very helpful. You're right. I think it needs a little more time for us to be able to review it and would like to be able to ask through the chair if at some point we could compile commissioners' questions and get them back to McBride and Malone and McBroom after we were able to maybe take a closer look at it in committee, which we weren't able to before this.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea. I think there's a lot of discussion that's going to need to, to happen with this information. So it was very, very good to hear.
So Rebecca, from your last projections, you were higher than your last medium projections in roughly three years ago.
Correct.
And, and the, in both your medium projection and, and your high projections from three years ago. And in planning for facilities moving forward, one should use, as you said, you can't grow a building.
Right.
Use the high projections.
Right.
Puppled with the fact that clearly we have new housing developments in certain areas within the district where we're seeing larger class sizes. So there's an intimation of the need to redistrict to ensure that we have class sizes that are equitable across the district.
There's, clearly, the growth is, is going to affect certain areas more than others. And if you're already experiencing pressures within those buildings, then it is something you'll likely have to address.
Any other questions that any of the commissioners may have while we have Rebecca?
So if you guys want to, you know, write up questions, we'll, we'll be happy to follow up and try to answer those.
Great. Thank you. I misspoke. Angela is part of QA, is now with QAM, and was with DRA. And we will be utilizing her expertise moving forward with an updated feasibility study.
Great.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Take care.
Okay, so next on our agenda is our end-of-the-year closing date. Hand that one to you.
So our end-of-the-year closing date is the last day of school, taking into account that we are just changing, that we did at the special meeting. The presidential preference primary, from its old date to June 2nd, would be that the last day of school for the 19, '20 school year would be June 18, '22. And historically, we have set that date in our April meeting, and here we are at our April meeting, so we are setting that date.
Okay. I don't see any new business before the board, so we can move on to building reports.
We need a motion for that. We need to approve the, the last day of school.
Oh, of course. Okay. May I please have a motion to approve the end-of-the-year closing date of the Bristol Public Schools for 2020? That was
That was Commissioner O'Brien?
It was.
Thank you. I need a second, please. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Skolinka. Can we do a roll call vote soon, just so the public can know everyone who's speaking?
Absolutely. Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Giantonio? Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Pons? Commissioner Skolinka?
Yes.
Commissioner Vibert?
Yes.
Commissioner Wodowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson? Anyone know where he went?
I see him.
Hold on.
He's on view.
No.
No?
No.
Chair Dubey?
Yes.
Motion passed, eight to one.
Okay, thank you. Now moving along, I don't see any new business before the board, so we can move on to our Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School update. Dr. Dieter?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so for the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School Building Committee report, we heard from several individuals at our last meeting, the first being the project manager. Project manager's update included discussion of meetings that occurred with OSCAR. That's the Office of School Instruction Grants Review. We reviewed Phase II DDR and also had other meetings regarding Phase I and approval for going out to bid. We did, he also updated us on our pre-bid meeting schedule. Given the current COVID endemic, we've had to adjust the way we're doing business. So the pre-bid meeting schedule will allow five people to meet and walk through that building to get a more deeper sense of what's going on. Bids that will commence tomorrow, 2nd of April. Bids are going to be due back on the 14th of April, and they will all be submitted online. Our architect provided an update in collaboration with the firm of Benesh. Benesh is going to do our stormwater discharge monitoring. This is a requirement of deep. And various bids came in. The bid that was selected was with Benesh. And that charge that will be charged to the project, monitoring over the 72 weeks of construction, will cost approximately $31,600. That was a decision item and was accepted by unanimous consent by the building committee members. The architect also presented finish boards. So these are the various finishes in the different locations throughout the building project. So we were able to observe what typical classroom, the color combinations, floor, ceiling tile, walls, et cetera, for classrooms, common areas, offices, as well as the theater. Some really amazing restoration-type work is going to be happening in that theater space with a, with, you know, very much keeping in mind that art deco theme, which is the time in which it was constructed. These finish boards, we had pictures of them, but we will have them at the Board of Ed, and by appointment, we'll allow, certainly encourage the public to come down and view them. The pictures don't give them justice, but the actual boards are something that, you know, people might be interested in looking at. And we can arrange appointments by communicating with me directly. We did have some feedback and discussion about the finish boards. And primarily, it was around ensuring that for areas of transition, whether it be stairs or ridable surfaces, as well as any other learning spaces that we keep in mind the need for. We have great natural lighting there, but any additional lighting, as well as contrast needed for those of our students that that may have a visual, and staff that may have visual impairments. We did not vote on the finish boards. Those will be voted on and accepted at the April meeting. And this, again, gives time for committee members, as well as anyone from the public interested in viewing, an opportunity to do that. We had an update from our construction manager, Phase I. As I mentioned, that's going out to bid. Those bids are due back on the 14th of the month. The bids have been posted in the Bristol Press, as well as Hartford Current. Pre-bid walkthroughs, as I mentioned, are scheduled to commence tomorrow. It'll be every 45 minutes. And Damato Downs, as well as Eagle Environmental, will be present during the walk to ensure safety and compliance with, well, compliance with safety and group procedures. We had rounded out the evening with two more items. One was the expenditure report by Tim Callahan, who brought us up to speed on our current expenditures. There is, at this time, at the time of reporting, $1,576,857 has been spent for the project. Of that, we have received back from the state So as eligibles are ready for submission, they're submitted, and that cycle has commenced. And then lastly, for this evening, we did have a, we returned to some old business that was related to insurance. So builder's risk insurance coverage, we did solicit bids. And based on those bids, we had, I believe, three carriers that submitted bids. We did go with a bid from Great American. Cost of that risk insurance coverage is just shy of $100,000. It's $99,890. And we also went with a, another policy, an additional policy with Great American that's known as a faulty workmanship coverage. In insurance terms, this is called lake-three coverage. The total expense for that is $9,520. Again, all of this is charged to the project. And these, both of these costs had previously been approved by the city, and a recommendation was made to the building committee. And that's all that I have by way of updates for this evening. Clearly, we've had to postpone our planned public forum, which was set to occur in April. But I want to stress that anyone from the public who's interested could reach out. All the items that I discussed this evening are available electronically, and we're open and available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Dieter. Next on our agenda is information and liaison reports. Does anybody have any information or liaison reports that they would like to share this evening? Going once? Going twice? I know it's been hard to get to schools when nobody's there, so I understand. That being said...
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I was going to ask for somebody to make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
A participant has left the meeting.
Was that your motion, Commissioner Perez?
That's my motion, motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll take a second.
Blank a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Have a pleasant evening.